All right, it's five thirty. I'll call to order the April fourth, two thousand twenty-three Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission meeting. Have a roll call, please, Mark.
Or is Mark doing the roll caller?
I, yeah.
Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Fractor.
Here.
Mr. Giller.
Here.
Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Guerra.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, planning commissioners, any changes to the minutes? Okay, uh, no changes to the minutes. So staff, any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Okay, so as part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open the meeting to any public comment. If you are attending the meeting by phone, press star nine on your phone, then star six to unmute yourself. Any comments? Okay, so first up, um, is the consent calendar, thirty-two rounds, single-family residents. Thirty-two rounds road, um, PL two zero two three zero zero five five.
Mr. Chairman, I move we call up this project.
Okay, so there's a second.
Second.
Second, okay. All right, so we will have a hearing.
And I'm sorry, can I get the motion in second again here, that was quick?
Mr. Gerard and, um, Ms. Proper.
Thank you, seconded.
Oh, we have to vote, okay, pull it up, sorry.
Yep, Mr. Lees, not here, um, Mr. Gerard.
Yes.
Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
Mr. Giller.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Guerra.
Yes.
I believe, uh, Cliff, is your project?
Cliff, to perhaps focus you in on the reason I wanted to call this up, uh, I think it's gonna come down to the usual issues on a project like this, which would be seven R and then, uh, thirty-three R.
And I'm gonna have some questions as well.
So I'd like me to just give a just give a short overview of the project prior, will do. Alrighty, Commissioner, so for the record, I am Cliff Cross Planner One. Um, so the project for you is a proposal for a new single-family house, um, constructing just under six thousand square feet, um, in the Highlands neighborhood. Um, it will be a four-bedroom, five-and-a-half bath, um, with a few other recreational room, media room, um, office. Um, there will be nine fireplaces. Alrighty, so as you can see on the screen, um, the house is very similar to a previously approved house just on the north side of this property. Um, it is by Alan Guerra, um, architect, so it is very similar. The overall let's see. The overall limitation for this lot is at six thousand three hundred and fifteen square feet, they're proposing five thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine square feet. As I suggested, they are, um, going to be let's see, I'm losing my space here. They are going to be receiving points for both seven R, um, twenty, or negative points for seven R, positive points for twenty-two R, um, as well as positive two points under thirty-three R. The residence does have, um, let's see, a longer driveway going all the way around, um, and then back into the garage where you're loading. Staff felt like there, um, were very similar precedent, um, to the house to the north, um, as well as some other precedents, as you can see in your packet, that removed the same amount of trees or suggested, um, driveway length and percentages. Um, with that, staff felt okay with recommending negative four points under seven R for the site disturbance. We did put one note in there, um, based on the house to the north about the retaining walls. Staff is okay with them because per the plans, they are gonna be below four feet. Um, but we did add in a condition just to protect ourselves if they are constructed above four feet. Um, and then the project would come back to assign negative points. Um, under thirty-three R, they are offsetting, um, the site disturbance with two EV chargers installed in the garage. And then they are making up the landscaping, um, by being able to provide quite a bit of landscaping all around the house. Um, and there are precedents based on number and size of that proposed landscaping. Where there it just provides, um, buffering adjacent properties as well as from the street. And then the concern for seven R, um, trees removed, there is, um, let's see. There was about twenty-something trees proposed with the, um, application you saw, um, last fall for the Highlands defensible space private property owners. Um, this property was supposed to be part of that. Um, so a lot of the trees being removed for seven R, um, were approved to be removed already. So that's just a quick overview, but I can take questions.
Just hold off one second. Ethan, you have to do your
I have to do my thing. I have, uh, I have to disclose that, uh, the applicant, uh, Alan Guerra, Suzanne, Alan Sabo is my ex-wife and business partner. However, I have no, uh, financial interest in this project whatsoever. Also, at this time, I will disclose that I will be recusing myself from the next item on the docket, because I do have a financial interest in it. I'll be leaving after this.
Yeah.
No concerns on them.
Yeah, any, um, commissioners have concerns with, uh, Ethan's participation on this hearing?
No.
Okay, so, um, well, why don't, um, why don't we start with Stevenson, so you, uh, started us off. Your concerns might address everyone else's.
So Cliff, as I understand it, looking at your analysis, you have three projects that you're citing as precedent. And these three projects, as shown on page eight of the packet, have a site, I guess I'll call, call it a displacement, for the driveway of between six point nine percent of the site and eight point eight percent of the site. And this site has a displacement of twelve point six percent. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, sir.
So almost nearly twice the hardscape of the other projects that only had four points. What's the, the theory that this shouldn't receive more negative points?
So we're, um, the first precedent that you mentioned, the six point nine, um, is the house just to the north, which is gonna be kind of that leading precedent. Um, same exact developer, same exact neighborhood, as well as the same exact design. Um, the lot sizes are a little bit different, um, so that percentage is gonna change, but the overall kind of um, disturbance to the site is very similar, um, to the property to the north. Um, the other residences, um, are, you know, similar square footages to the precedent, um, but then did include, um, other, I guess, like retaining wall structures, um, for thirty-six rounds road receives points for the retaining walls, part of that seven R as well. So this one is primarily focusing on the driveway piece of the thirty-six R. So it is a higher, um, disturbance, um, but it's not as obscene as other disturbances. The driveway is definitely, um, kind of routed this way due to the grading, um, in this area. They couldn't just come straight from, um, that top left corner up the hill. Um, they did kind of have to introduce a switchback, um, which kind of leads me back to thirty-six rounds road as that primary precedent.
And you hit one of my next questions. Why no negative points on the retaining walls?
You, for the plans, the retaining walls are, um, under four feet, so staff is comfortable with them?
But isn't there also an element of just the quantity, like number of linear feet of retaining walls and the disturbance that goes with that?
Yes, um, for our code, we do have a limitation of twenty, um, feet length for a landscape wall. Um, but considering this is kind of for the driveway getting up to the site, um, they are kind of necessary for the implementation of that driveway.
Do you, did you happen to measure and can you compare the linear feet of retaining walls on this project with the linear feet of retaining walls on any of the comparable, the precedent?
I do not have that information.
Steve, I think typically we have not assigned negative points for length of retaining walls. It's usually been when they've exceeded four feet in height, but I can't give you all the examples of that, if we have or not.
So on the screen is the property to the north. Um, as you can see, the retaining walls for this is, um, linearly very similar. And you do not have the exact number at this time.
With respect to the positive two points for landscaping, if you go back to the, to this project, is there, is there a chance we're over landscaping this project just to get some points? I mean, it's pretty heavily, I, when I took a look at it, it's pretty, pretty heavily treed. And they're putting a lot of trees in, I'll credit that. But is that actually necessary, or are we just playing the two points for landscaping game to offset our long disturbing driveway? And is there any thought process behind that recommendation?
Based on the number of trees that are, you know, were proposed to be removed with the defensible space and then proposed to be removed with this driveway, um, a significant amount of trees did need to be kind of introduced back into the site, um, to maintain that buffering on all sides of the property. Um, with that being said, there is a trail easement in the rear of the property. Um, so having additional buffering just kind of keeps that privacy for the residents.
And then could you address the implication of thirty-three R on the number of fireplaces and fire pits?
At this time, um, we just account for them, the work sessions that are going on, um, based on natural gas uses aren't applicable at this point.
Well, we talked about this a meeting or two ago, and I think what Chris told me when I asked the question was that you got a homeowner, a residence got one fire pit free, no points.
Yeah, they don't apply right now to residence, residential, unless it's like multifamily with common areas or commercial. So right now, we could pull up that section of the code, but I think it's pretty clear on that.
Proposed for the rent changes.
That aren't in effect, yeah.
But they're not in effect yet.
All right, I did have the same concern as you, Steve.
Well, those are my questions, thank you.
Okay. Right, Susan.
Um, well, I share Steve's concerns about, uh, the driveway. Um, I appreciate your explanation. And I was confused, I think I understand it now, but I was confused by some of the language of the report. Uh, for example, uh, when it introduces landscaping, it says no new landscaping is proposed with this application. And, uh, then of course there is. Um, and then, uh, when the points are discussed, it mentions twenty-two R twice for two points. Um, and it didn't mention thirty-three R. Uh, so I was pretty thrown off, um, trying to figure out how they could get four points for twenty-two R, with no landscaping.
This might have just been typos on my end, I apologize.
Yeah, okay, but I, but I take it now there's an extensive landscaping plan and that two of the points relate to the EV spaces.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll correct this.
All right, I think I got it.
Is that, anymore questions, Susan, for staff?
Uh, no, that, that did it for me.
Okay, okay. Mike, do you have questions for staff?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I do share Steve's concerns. I saw nine fireplaces, I only counted seven. I may have missed a couple, but nine.
Seven indoor, two outdoor.
Oh. Okay, thank you. But nine just strikes me as the sort of thing that, um, as we work towards a more sustainable development code, uh, there should be negative points for. Thank you. I too share the concern about the fireplaces, um, and it's more of a, a, a comment. The two outdoor fireplaces, we know that that's coming up and, and, and will be limited to one. The seven fireplaces indoors seems excessive, and has that been addressed for future projects in, in the energy code? I mean, no, we don't, we can't do anything here. That has not been discussed.
I think, I thought you said, Mark, the, in the ramp, uh, a proposed rep, that there would be a limit on the number of gas appliances inside the home?
No, only outside.
Oh.
The ramp's entirely outdoor use, yeah. So that's my comment, it seems excessive. My other comment is, uh, so the, the report calls for four bedrooms, uh, there's actually six. If you look at, uh, the rec room, or the exercise room is actually a bedroom. It will be, um, identified as such by the building department. Um, and I question also, the rec room has bunk beds in it and a closet. I don't know how the, how the building department will look at that and the sanitation department. I know, uh, for future projects, I'm wondering why the planning commission does not mirror the building department in that respect, and this, and call it at least a five-bedroom, because it is, um, and possibly a six-bedroom.
So there, uh, there's some inconsistencies, um, you're correct, Ethan. There's some inconsistent inconsistencies with the term of a bedroom or potential sleeping room, um, when it comes to planning, building, um, and even to short-term rental licensing. Um, so there are some inconsistencies. At this time, planning does not review the, or, um, define those as potential sleeping rooms or bedrooms in our code.
I'm, I'm very aware of that, Cliff. I'm just wondering why, and if that's something that we should look at. The, the exercise room is very clearly a bedroom. It has a closet, has an adjoining bathroom, it's a bedroom, period. And all the other, you know, sanitation is definitely calling it that, building department is definitely calling that. And then I also question the, the, uh, rec room having bunks. It's just a comment. Um, we don't have to drag on about it, but just wanted to point that out. That's, that's all my, all my comments, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm not going to reiterate, but I concur with, uh, um, my colleagues in terms of, uh, the number of fireplaces and such, but I'm gonna save additional comments for, uh, close, as we close. So would the, uh, applicant, um, I don't know if the applicants, well, applicants here, I don't know if you're representing the applicant on this project?
I agree with you guys, I think, you know, seven fireplaces is absolutely ridiculous. No reason why a six thousand square foot house should have that many fireplaces. So if you codified it, then I can tell my clients, you don't think of four fireplaces, you know, or whatever, X amount per square foot or something like that. So I think that makes a lot of sense. Other than that, the driveway is, is what it is, like we have to do that in order to get on the lot. It's a very steep lot, as you can see coming off the street. Um, when the red lands, graded out the rounds road, that corner got cut into the hill, and so it's a steep hill there that we have to climb.
I would comment that it is thirty feet of, of, uh, grade across the, uh, the disturbance.
If you want the garage on the same level, right, as the main living area, which, yeah, I'm gonna comment on that later. Any questions for their applicant? Okay, um, at, at this time, if anyone in the public has any comments, anything online? Okay, so, uh, well, obviously this was on the consent calendar, so there's no questions to answer on the report from staff, but, um, we'll do closing comments, we'll just go with the same order. Steve, if you will leave us off, please.
Well, I thought it was really important to call this up and make a record, because this project is stepping into a whole another realm from what we've seen before. I think that we are underpointing on the site disturbance, driveways and retaining walls, uh, this particular project, and, you know, this is a choice. And yes, I see what you need to do to get all the way around to the back and have a large, um, hardscape in the back, even allowing for extra parking spaces on the side, uh, at the end of the garage, which I don't see any purpose for that, uh, other than to make more parking for more cars. But, uh, that having been said, you know, we, we assessed six points actually for this kind of a driveway in the similar project. And if I recall Ethan's conversation there, Ethan pretty much agreed that we're gonna be able to hold these retaining walls to four feet or less on the other project. And they still got two points for their, for the retaining walls. That's my recollection. Um, so I plan to make a motion at the end of, uh, comments to change the point analysis, and I plan to do that in three areas. One will be on the live where, where I think, um, under nineteen-nine dash one dash nineteen-seven R sub paragraph D for the driveway. The point assessment can be two times minus four, which goes up to eight, minus eight. If these other projects, which are fifty percent less in many cases than this one, get four, this one deserves six. So I'm gonna argue for six negative points for this driveway combination retaining wall. Under, um, section nine dash one dash nineteen thirty-three R, I believe we can address this excessive number of fireplaces. In sub-paragraph C, it says that the planning commission can use negative points to address design features which use excessive amounts of energy. And I'm going to recommend that there be two negative points assigned for the design features of having a total of nine fireplaces, obviously using excessive amounts of energy. And I'm also concerned about the, the landscaping. Um, this has always been a cheap giveaway. I'll give everybody two points for a, a slightly above-average landscaping plan. But in this case, it's not necessary. It's a, it's a heavily treed lot, they're putting sixty-five new trees in there in order to get the two points, and I don't think, uh, that that's how we wanna use above-average landscaping. So my comments are, I, I think this house is pushing all of our envelopes in its placement and design and choice of where they want the driveway and the parking area and in this excessive use of landscaping and energy. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, Susan.
Um, I share Steve's concerns. Um, I think that, uh, the, uh, amount of disturbance for this driveway is considerable. Um, and, uh, I also agree that there are so many fireplaces involved in this project that there is, uh, an impact on energy consumption. So I, I would share Steve's concerns on this.
Good, thank you. Mike?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I do share Steve's concerns. I note that the retaining wall at the center, sort of opposite the front door, has four feet of additional cut, uh, immediately above the retaining wall. They which increases the impact. Thank you.
Uh, my own comments on the, on the fireplaces, and again, Steve, thank you for pointing out that we can assess negative points, um, for excessive energy use, and I would be supportive of adding two negative points for the excessive fireplaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well, one thing, I, I'd like to ask the, uh, Mark if we could, um, just put down for future work sessions on code, maybe we can consider recommendations on code specifically, a number of internal, uh, gas appliances. And then also add, maybe we should consider, uh, adjusting the code, not just for height of retaining walls, but for, for total linear feet of retaining walls. Um, I'd also like to comment, it's, it's, I don't know, I don't know if ironic is the right word, but just that our, our applicant is, um, gonna be presenting a project later on that we're, that they're working very hard with the ten, that a goal of, uh, the town and the project is to be carbon neutral. Uh, and, uh, you, you also have to work on a project now that has nine fireplaces, so, uh, but you have to serve your client, so I understand, I, I appreciate that, but I could, uh, I can appreciate the situation that you're in, uh, it's just kind of a contrast between the two projects that we're facing today. Um, so I, I do con, uh, concur with the sentiments, uh, that Steve outlined, uh, as well. So, um, at this time, I think we will, um, do we consider the motion?
Yeah, and if you could, if, if I just have a chance to, yeah, I don't know if Cliff has anything else, just, I just wanted to respond to a couple of things I've heard.
Sure.
Steve, I think you are correct. I mean, we have rarely, if ever, invoke that policy.
Never to acknowledge.
But it's, it's there, um, and I think you're, you're on on that. I mean, that's, you know, that's fair game for you guys to make that proposal, and, um, you know, I think the landscaping's a judgment call. Um, there, as Chris said, excuse me, as, um, Cliff said, there's, you know, a lot of landscape in the back, partly to provide some buffering from that trail back there, but, um, whether it's, um,
provide some buffering from that trail back there. But um, whether it's um, warrants two points, obviously I you know, staff thinks it does, but you know, it's ultimately up to you guys to make the call. I would be concerned about going to minus six on the driveway. And if you're gonna do that, I mean, we had this discussion, it seems like a few months ago, and it was on Highlands Drive. And I think we ended up deciding it would go negative four. And then there was either negative two, it was either for the retaining walls or for tree removal, one of the two. Yeah, retaining walls. So I if you're gonna do that, I would prefer just from a precedent standpoint, because those are two different areas where points are assigned under um, seven R. So I prefer maybe it was minus four under the driveway and minus two under retaining walls, um, rather than, you know, going to the minus six. Um, you indicated it's fifty percent, but it's not fifty percent more um, area that's being paved. It's just when you look at it from, like you said, on a area wide basis. So um, anyway, that's just my suggestion is possibly um, looking at the points from that perspective. And I still, even then the retaining walls, I, I wish I could tell you in terms of length on these, because if you look at the discussion under where negative points are under C, under seven R, it really talks more about um, you know, the height and the materials. And um, I don't see so much in here that relates actually to the overall length of them, but maybe I'm missing that.
But as Mike pointed out, there's additional disturbance on top of certain parts of the retaining wall. So it, 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 it could be justified, just as you said, that total disturbance, not just the total, which could be a combination of the retaining walls and the additional uh, disturbance above and around the retaining walls.
Right.
Also, I thought we had, uh, I thought in interpreting those points that it's either, when you're doubling, it's either four or eight, and you couldn't go in between?
No, we, uh, we changed that. So it's an incremental two.
Oh, that it can be. Okay.
Yep.
Mark, what I'd like to do, just so that the record comes up to the council or back to the applicants, is make three different motions to adjust the point analysis. Because I'm not sure we all feel the same way about all three of the areas that I plan to make these motions.
That's a good proposal.
So I'm gonna make motion with respect to seven R. And I'll make that motion under paragraph A, overall site disturbance as a result of the linear feet of retaining walls and additional disturbance and cut in putting in the driveway. So I'm gonna make a motion that the point analysis be changed, amended, to add an additional negative two points for site disturbance under section nine dash one dash nineteen seven R, sub paragraph A.
Have a second?
Who seconded?
Uh, Commissioner Gillar.
Thank you. Mr. Gillar?
Yes?
Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Can I back up for a minute? Can you state that again? You're recalling, you're, you're asking me to approve an extra two negative points?
For overall site disturbance as a result of the
I got it.
Retaining walls and additional cuts.
I'm gonna say no on that. I have some additional comments I can state at this time, or um, after the vote on why.
I think you can defend your own.
Okay. Looking at the site, it's very, very steep. And if they were to bring the driveway in at the front of the lot, right now, the lower level is at ninety-seven twelve. The back of the house grade is uh, ninety-seven twenty-four. That's twelve feet of grade. That would put the that would put an excessive amount of, of subterranean um, depth on the lower level. I think, I think that with that, with the, the site, the way it is, I think this driveway is called for. I think there's no other real way to get on the lot and to have a three car garage and any kind of program that works. And so for that reason, I I, uh, I don't have a problem with uh, the point analysis on the, uh, on the driveway due to the excessive steepness and layout of this lot. So I will vote no on that.
May I speak to that or similar? Some of what's driving the excessive retaining wall and the four feet of cut immediately above it on the east is the additional parking spot outside the garage and the wider width of the apron. If they narrowed the apron width, pulled the retaining wall towards the garage and removed that parking spot, I think it would reduce the impact and requirement, total requirement of retaining wall. Therefore, I'm voting uh, to assess negative two, but I certainly respect your insights.
Well, I would add to that, that if you were to do that, you would then need to put a hammerhead for a turnaround, and you'd end up with the same result. Fair enough?
Okay, um, next.
I haven't voted yet.
Mr. Gerard?
Oh, yes.
Yes. Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Okay, passes four to one.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a second amendment to the point analysis. And a finding that the design features of this home use excessive amounts of energy through the inclusion of nine gas fireplaces. And under section nine dash one dash nineteen thirty-three R, sub paragraph C. That a negative two points be assessed for that excessive energy use in the design.
Second?
Oh, second.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillar?
Yes.
Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes. And Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a third motion to amend the point analysis to remove the two positive points for landscaping which I believe does not convey an above average landscape plan to the benefit of the public.
There's.
My second.
Mr. Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillar?
No.
Ms. Proper?
Um, yes.
Mr. Guerra?
No.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have a, a project that no longer has a passing point analysis. So um, in these typical situations, we would ask the applicant if they would prefer to have a continuance or a denial.
Do we vote on that?
Yeah.
I move that we continue this project for further analysis by the planning department.
Second.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Is Fractor?
Yes.
Mr. Gillar?
Yes.
Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So next on the agenda is Town Project Stables Village Master Plan. Seven ten Wellington Road, PL two zero two three dash zero zero three four. You coming back after for the update? Okay. Where will we find you?
I'll come back.
Okay. Do we have a quorum?
Yeah, quorum's for.
Hey, Sarah, please.
Here we go. Uh, good evening, everybody, Chair and Commissioners. I am Sarah Crum, Planner Two for the Record. And I'm pleased to bring the Town Project of the Stables Village Master Plan, uh, or Stillson Master Plan to you this evening for a public hearing. Um, I'm gonna go through the point analysis and what has changed since the work session that we had on March seventh. Um, the Planning Commission made a few suggestions and decisions during that meeting, so I'll cover what has changed. And then there are a few revisions that I want to go over at the end as well, which will occur before the town here, project hearing with the Town Council next week. Um, and so let's just dive right in. Uh, so this Stillson Master Plan is located on seven ten Wellington Road. It's the Stillson Patch Placer tract owned by the town. It's approximately thirty-eight acres at this point. Um, the town currently conducts government um, business and the public storage, snow storage. Um, there's a solar garden on Planning Area B um, within the master plan, and all of that area is planned to stay as is. Um, the majority of Planning Area A is planned to be developed into a workforce housing neighborhood with sixty-one units comprised of five single-family homes, thirty-eight duplex units, and eighteen triplex units. The um, homes will be for sale units, um, one hundred percent deed restricted. So um, we'll focus on Planning Area A because that is where the proposed development is. A Planning Area B, again, uh, proposed to remain uh, with governmental uses. So the Town Council approved in February a new land use district that will cover a portion of Planning Area A. And um, this is Land Use District forty-six. The density allowed on it is eight units per acre, and the proposed development um, comes in at seven point one units per acre, meaning that staff has no concerns with the proposed density on the site. Also cover a little bit of item history for this. Um, the Town Council did conduct several work sessions at the end of twenty twenty-two and the beginning of twenty twenty-three for a fit test for this project. And they uh, you know, considered the appropriate number of units and location for this project. We've covered density and the land use district. So moving on to uh, five A policy and five R in the um, in the, in the development code, architectural compatibility. Um, most of the, or excuse me, all of the individual units will be reviewed at the staff level um, under the development permit process for a class D major. Um, so we won't get into specifics for the architectural compatibility, but I did want to cover one item. Um, during the work session, it was proposed that some use of non-natural materials would occur. At this time, um, under the master plan, we would like to um, use the maximum number of negative points and say that um, one hundred percent of non-natural materials with a natural appearance will be used for this project that helps the project to meet the sustainability and net zero goals. Um, so using something like composite wood and paired with um, metal way and scotting uh, will be the direction of the architecture. And so under the master plan, taking the maximum negative points under policy five R. And this follows the um, materials matrix which was revised and approved last year by the Planning Commission. Moving on to um, building height. All of the buildings are proposed to be no greater than thirty-five feet in height above grade. The code does allow um, formerly disturbed sites to use the average slope in order to establish an existing slope. So that is what will occur on this site because it was previously disturbed by past mining um, and has a lot of rock tailings and uh, undulation across the site. Um, the average slope as seen here in Exhibit B will be used to determine the existing grade. Uh, this is, as Mark Lee's put it last time, just a tool to establish the existing um, grade. It is not, uh, this is not the proposed grade for later. Considering site and environmental design under policy seven R, um, some of the units will have retaining walls, and I will point these out to you. Um, the master plan proposes taking the maximum amount of negative points for retaining walls, um, which are necessary on some lots because of the uh, existing grade. And so negative four points has been assigned, and that is consistent with what was discussed in the work session. Now, the um, future bio swale that's proposed that will follow the northwest edge of the project, this will be um, not only important for buffering the site from the Planning Area B Public Works area, but also provide drainage for the entire neighborhood. One change from the work session, um, under policy nine, placement of structures. The uh, proposed development will uh, use perimeter boundaries to establish setbacks. This is something that is often used in developments in Breckenridge when you consider cluster, single-family or multifamily homes in a subdivision neighborhood. So the setbacks for the sides and the rear of each unit will be measured to this uh, communal perimeter boundary, which goes all the way around the site. Just like that. And then front setbacks will be measured to the right of way. Um, consistent with the required twenty-three foot um, setback for engineering. This allows for an eighteen foot parking space and another five feet of clearance from the public sidewalk. A request and change since the work session is that rear setbacks for the units be allowed to be ten feet. This um, follows the absolute policy for setbacks, but does not meet the relative policy. So negative um, four points under policy um, nine will, sorry, negative three points for not meeting the rear setbacks under policy nine are, is proposed for this policy. You can see in blue the proposed storage, snow storage area on the site. This will be at least twenty-five percent of the, which is required for all areas to be cleared of snow. There will be a shared community dumpster, a trash location at this point where the end of the alley comes to the loop, and then a community-wide to be shared with the entire Breckenridge community recycling and compost area here. This meets the requirements of fifteen A and fifteen R for multi-unit residential developments that requires trash enclosures. This is different from Lincoln Park and Wellington neighborhoods where they have roll-off cans. Under Policy sixteen for access and circulation, the site will come from Wellington Road and improve Stables Drive throughout to the, well, existing Wellington Bike Park. And then a new Loop Road will connect the neighborhood on both ends to Stables Drive and a private alley through the center and between the town home development or triplex units, excuse me. I did want to point out a new proposed public trail in, that is this orange here. This is a bike and pedestrian pathway that will connect Wellington Road with the bike park that's existing. At the previous work session, we discussed parking on the site, and we asked the commission, is it okay if we consider the triplex units in the way the code considers duplex units to assess the parking needs? Because otherwise, the way the code reads, it assesses greater than duplex units as multifamily as if they were to have a shared surface parking reservoir, and that doesn't really meet the spirit of providing a single-car garage and an outdoor exterior space for each of the triplex units as this proposes. So the commission agreed that we could go forward with assessing the triplex units requirements the way we do for duplexes. So all parking requirements have been met. Each single-family home will have a two-car garage and two exterior spaces, and then each duplex will have at least one, a one-car garage and one exterior space, and each triplex unit will have one-car garage and exterior space. This allows for one hundred and forty-four parking spaces amongst the sixty-one units that are assigned, you know, basically deeded to each unit. And then there's an additional proposed twenty-two visitor spots that are located at the end of the alley here. And again, over at the new proposed community gathering space. So staff agrees that parking is sufficient. I know this was a hot button issue with town council, so we wanted to make sure that we got it right. Under Policy twenty, recreation, the master plan proposes quite a few new trail connections and some pedestrian-only trails, which are shown in green, and new connections to existing trails in orange for pets and bikes, as well as a nice trail that goes along the bio swale to the northwest. For what positive points under this policy, we're recommending positive three for the connection from Wellington Road to the bike park. This is pretty congruent with previous recreation proposals and other projects. The master plan proposes six acres, two hundred and sixty square feet of open space for the development. This is, exceeds the amount of open space in other similar neighborhoods that have previously been developed, like Wellington and Lincoln Park. Landscaping will be, again, considered at the individual development permits for single units, but the master plan does specify low water use plants and, if we can, xeriscape landscaping to be consistent with those sustainability goals that are proposed. Under Policy twenty-four R, this project warrants up to, or it does warrant ten positive points because the project is one hundred percent of deed-restricted units dedicated to the workforce needs that our community has. The project will be offered to, offered at unit prices between eighty and one hundred forty percent of the area median income. And this project also qualifies for six positive points under a separate section of Policy twenty-four R because it meets a council goal from the past three years. So the council identified housing and diversity of housing for locals as a council goal in twenty twenty-one. So this project will get six points for that. The Loop Road that goes through the center of the site does not currently meet our engineering standards. The lane widths are proposed to be ten feet wide, but the total right-of-way, which will include three-foot pans, five-foot sidewalk on both, on the west side of the loop, and snow storage easement is appropriate for this neighborhood. And you may have seen the memo that was included in the packet from the town engineer voicing her support and showing that she does not have concerns with the proposed lane widths. It will require variance from engineering, but she's shown that this is not a problem, and the smaller lane widths for such a low-volume road are not a concern. Under Policy forty-seven A, which regulates fencing in the town of Breckenridge, fencing is allowed in master plan neighborhoods. There are two types of fencing proposed with this project. A lower three-foot fence that slatted would, would be allowed between duplex and single-family homes. The fencing could not be in the front yard of the house. It must start at the side of the yard and could follow the footprint around to the rear. The triplex units are not allowed to have fencing. And a second type of fence, this is proposed by the town as a safety precaution to buffer the neighborhood between Planning Area A and Planning Area B. A six-foot privacy fence will be from approximately here, flanking the northwest part of the site in order to, again, buffer the neighborhood from activities that are going on over here, like snow storage or moving large equipment and that sort of thing. To quickly summarize the positive points, so the project will get three positive points under twenty R for the proposed recreation trail segment, ten positive points under twenty-four A for providing one hundred percent deed-restricted housing, six points under twenty-four R for meeting a council goal. So that's a total of positive nineteen. For negative points, the, our proposed architecture with non-natural materials up to one hundred percent on any facade is warrants negative six points. The environmental site disturbance with height and length of retaining walls deserves the maximum of negative four points. And then finally, not meeting the absolute policy for rear setbacks, or sorry, not meeting the relative policy for setbacks. It does meet the absolute. Warrants negative three points. So that's a total of negative thirteen for a combined point analysis of positive six. Before we wrap up, I did want to cover a couple revisions that will are fairly minor that are going to be made prior to the town council hearing. You can kind of follow along. In Section one of the master plan, the sentence that refers to fifteen thousand one hundred and eleven square feet of snow storage is to be removed. And we feel it's sufficient to just say that twenty-five percent of the paved area to be cleared of snow will be met instead of holding ourselves to that very specific number in case that changes a little bit in the future. The second change is under Section three of, where it lists the governmental uses. Detention, we're just going to add drainage and detention under that list. And then finally, under Section five, for the sentence that talks about transfer of development rights, it will, should say, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, not prior to the issuance of a building permit. So those are the three revisions, pretty simple, that are going to be made prior to the town council hearing. With that concludes my point analysis presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Nice report.
Susan.
I have no questions. Thanks very much, Sarah.
Michael.
Thank you, Chair. Good analysis and presentation, Sarah. Couple of small questions. One is, I presume there's no parking on Loop Road even with the three-foot pan, just because of the lane width and the designated parking spots?
That's correct. It's not proposed to have any parking on the parallel with the road.
Great. And then second, the natural-looking, non-natural siding materials. I know that you and the town are working on some, oh, criteria on that. Would that apply here?
We don't have the specific, any specific requirements for, if you were to say non-natural, like exactly what that needs to be. We do in the materials matrix specify composite wood siding. I don't know if there's direction on exactly the materials that will be specified now, but we felt that the maximum amount of negative points under the code should cover any non-natural material that's chosen.
That seems reasonable at this point, but perhaps I'm also asking, where is the town on the development of other siding materials and in the code on that?
Well, when we went through the materials matrix process of changing Policy five R, it kind of was discussed that the commissioners weren't comfortable allowing that outright at this point. So we assess negative points. And then I guess other proposed materials, if there's, you know, something that's not in our matrix that someone wanted to use, would be brought to the commission on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, so in this case, we have the maximum negative and more flexibility. Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chair.
The first question I have is, I'll ask because I know Alan is interested in this, then he won't have to be asking for his own benefit. When we're talking about the parcel B, the planning table for uses, it doesn't look like any of those words would describe private party storage of campers.
Town resident, town employee.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably loosely under public work storage, but if we wanted to add something, something more generic, yeah.
Maybe. I, I mean, there are people that, there's quite a bit of storage out there, I think, that I've observed. And so rather than have somebody later get caught with a camper out there, it's not properly described.
Maybe we want to add other governmental uses, just because limiting to these very specific things is well-limiting.
You know, I don't know, calling it a governmental use would be the right. I think you could just say private storage.
Yeah.
That's, doesn't mean everybody has the right, but it does allow it to be used that way.
Okay.
Under the design standards, and I don't, I can see the benefit of it being worded this way, we're talking about having one hundred percent exterior materials, non-natural. And then it goes on to talk about what we're going to do with the wood elements. And wood, to me, is natural. Is that, am I being too picky about that?
Maybe, non-natural, hundred percent materials, maybe.
Yeah.
I think it was, it does say wood look, doesn't it not?
I'm reading, I'm on the plat, the big drawing, and under Design Standards, Paragraph four, where it talks about the natural appearance and all that stuff. Hundred percent of exterior materials may be non-natural, and then it goes on. Wood elements will be either stained or painted.
Maybe we should specify wood look or natural wood materials will be stained. I think that was the intention. Yeah.
I know what your intention is. Confusing.
Right.
And they're, when they're trying to get their hundred percent and make it all work with the carbon neutral. Those are my only comments and observations. Or just, I guess, one thing, when you talk about the fencing, so you're talking about a fence that would run straight and parallel off the, the physical building back. So you got a building, and it's got side walls, and the fence would go straight down the sidewall.
No, I think it's envisioned, as long as you're not penetrating the front yard. So you could go into your side yard off the side.
Okay, so you could go out at a ninety-degree angle from the building, then parallel the setback to get to the back.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So nice, nice job, Sarah. Two questions. So could you just remind me, so the next step, there'll be a development plan, and does that come to us as well? Or is that, that will be, only show up on the consent calendar or not at all?
The next step, so this master plan will go to the town council for approval upon your recommendation tonight. And then they, you may see a subdivision application to divide the tracks for future development.
Okay.
And the individual lots would not, you would not see proposals for those that would be given to you in your summary when you get the D-major summaries every quarter.
Got it, okay. And this maybe is out of our purview, but I'm just curious. Who will write the initial declarations and bylaws for the HOA?
Oh, that's a great question for housing or Suzanne.
On the. We're currently working on that as the housing team at the House of Public.
Okay, so it'll be done by the town, not by the developer or, okay. I only ask because the Wellington and Lincoln Park, there was things in the declarations that should have been bylaws, and it's hard to, really, really hard to change that because you need a two-thirds majority of all owners, not just voting, the voters, to change anything in the declarations.
Correct. So we're, we're working on with the town lawyer and a different, different method of planning.
Okay. I would just suggest that you talk to the Wellington HOA board about the frustrations they've had with that, so you don't make the same mistake.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Okay. At the side of the applicant, then, like to present.
Can you hear me now? Good evening. Thank you for all your time on this project. It's good to be at this point. I only have a couple things. Thanks to Sarah for such a thorough presentation and for all the town working with us through this project. But if you go to the next one, I think we're all familiar with our site and the uses. I'm back. Okay, I just want to point out three site plan items that came up from our last meeting. First, privacy on that, on that buffer. We did work with the civil engineer to meander the bio swale, and then also then we're able to meander the landscaping through that zone to create pockets of landscape on both sides of that meandered trail to increase privacy. Thought that was a great comment, Alan, so thanks for that. The second thing is that we did in working with engineering and public works, we have added two medians onto Stables Drive for traffic calming. You can see those two medians in the location there. That will, you'll be able to see that in the plat as well, but that's something that we've talked about and have worked through with engineering on various options with the grade change on the road and also. Um just the narrowness between um the development areas um on the sides. And the third thing that you probably can't tell with the detail that you've had, but. Um we did make some slight variations to the garden park detention area and trail and how that all interacts. And comes into the trash and compost center, just to make sure that that was going to be a really nice usable space for residents. Um and so that was something that we've, we've, we've been working through with civil. As we work through with civil, you know, we'll continue to have those infrastructure things coming through soon in that subdivision. But those are really the main things I wanted to point out. Everything else Sarah covered, we've made a lot of little changes into the master plan text. That gets us into a a good position to move this project forward and happy to take any other questions.
Thank you. Let's keep the same order, Susan. Any questions?
No questions, thanks.
Um thank you, Elena. A couple of small questions on storage, which may be more architectural than landscape architectural, but. It says that the preliminary floor plans of the triplex units show exterior storage closets, and then later it speaks to. Private storage claw or storage units, sheds no larger than a hundred square feet. Um and that those should be compatible, but could the residents? Each come up with a different compatible design and place those anywhere they want on the lots?
That is a good question. Sarah can answer that.
If you, if you want to build a storage shed, you'd have to come to our office for a permit, so we would, the. Planning department would assess the compatibility with the master plan as far as architecture. Um and then there's any storage shed would need to meet the foot, the setbacks that are required, so they couldn't place it anywhere on the lot. Um but if you have a suggestion that you prefer us to include in the master plan, we could do that.
Um maybe some concept sketches of what would be approved. I know that, for example, in the ADU world, a lot of jurisdictions are coming up with standard designs that are readily approved. And to avoid a kind of a hodge, hodge mish- mismatch of uh storage shed designs. Uh just point them in the right direction. And then tell them about where it might be suitable on their lot. If placed right, it could have benefits in terms of screening and privacy. Thank you.
It's a great comment. Thank you. Also, I forgot to mention on the wood. Um in the architectural design standards under item four, we want to have the option to do natural wood. Should we, should we be able to, so we'll adjust that um within there to to say both the. Uh natural looking and natural.
Oh, yeah. One more storage comment. The triplexes don't appear to have the site area to place a ten-by-ten shed, but if they already have the storage closet in the preliminary design, you might clarify.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's pretty, it says that they're not permitted to have an additional storage set under. Development standards table notes, item five.
Okay.
However, I do need a a a magnifying glass for this right now, okay? Correct. Shall not be allowed storage sheds.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Steve? No questions. Thank you.
Uh just one more uh comment suggestion of lessons learned from uh the Wellington neighborhood. Uh just beyond, just south of of this on the intersection of uh. Uh Stables Drive and what they call South Alley. The drainage ditch there, when the plows come in the winter, um they plow the snow flat, so it looks like part of the road and. Commissioner Guerra is not here to share. He lives right near there, and he knows that swallows a car about an average of one a week. Um so I know that along Stables Drive, um and the neighbors helped get my wife out of there uh recently, so. I know that there is a drainage dish. I don't know how deep that's going to be, but if their engineering can or come up with anything that would keep the plows from. Plowing that, filling that with snow and then plowing it flat, so it looks like part of the road, uh would be probably beneficial.
Is that right below the word space, between the word space and the scale bar, Alan?
On which, uh you're on that one?
Yep, is that the sound?
That little alley right between, so Stables Drive and when that alley goes in.
Okay.
There's a big drainage ditch there that gets fills up quickly with snow and it looks like it's part of the road.
Okay.
So I noticed that you have the drainage ditch all along the the east side of Stables Drive here. And and then uh as you get to the center of the new neighborhood, it's on both sides. So if there's some kind of structure or something that could be put in, so that's just not plowed. Flat, so it looks like a wider road in the winter.
Yeah, we're doing, we'll bring that to our civil engineer Alpine. We are doing some work with engineering to reconfigure the parking. Access so that it's safer and on the side of the bike park, and so hopefully we can extend some of those drainage improvements there, too.
Yeah, and it happens also, I think, on French Gulch Road a lot, too, on the other side of Wellington. There's ditch, the ditches are right there alongside, and it be, it looks like it's part of the road.
This year especially.
We have those two, and the only solution were. The snow slicker on it.
Yeah. They quickly get run over by the snow.
Do, but they at least give them a chance.
That's it for comments. So this is a public hearing. Um is there any members of the public who wish to comment, uh either here? Present or? If you're um on Zoom, please raise your hand, or if you were calling in by phone plus star nine, if you're attending uh or. And star six to unmute yourself. Anyone? Okay, we'll close publicly.
Wait, he was everything he said.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, yeah.
Thanks.
Please state your name and address.
Uh my name's Brian Peterson. Uh I live on the Lincoln Park side, and I can vouch for that drainage ditch. It's right in front of my house, and there's a car in there at least once a week. I've gone in myself. Um that road is really narrow to begin with, and like you say, it it gets covered and everybody goes in. Um I don't know if this is the right forum to bring up these questions, but um I thought it'd come anyway. Um we were just wondering, we're kind of interested in this new development. Um like I say, we live in the Lincoln Park side. Um we're kind of wondering size of these units, and maybe this is, like I said, maybe it's not the right forum for this. Um like the single family, how big they are roughly. I know it's maybe early days on that, too. Um and then. Um a lot of, like on the Wellington and Lincoln Park side. Um we're a family of four. Um we have a three-bedroom. It's still tight. And we're wondering if there's going to be four-bedroom or a second living area. Um in these units. Um my, I do construction up here, small remodels and stuff. You know, we're at our place's twelve eighty-seven. I'm thinking, you know, we don't need a four thousand square foot place or six thousand square foot place, obviously, especially to do affordable housing. Um would they be around the sixteen hundred square feet? You know, generally.
We'll answer um after he's done with all those questions.
And then, you know, the other part of that is, we have two kids. They're going to grow up in this neighborhood. Um we have two parking spaces right now. I can have a third. We're going to have, you know, a kid driving in a few years. Parking spaces is is a huge thing within any of these neighborhoods, but um, you know, to be able to have. Our kids driving and stuff, and where do we park those cars? Um as these, as these neighborhoods get um, as people have been there longer and longer, kids are going to be driving and everything, so. Kind of keep that in mind of. Could, if you're a family of four, you could have four cars. Um maybe not, maybe we've moved out of the neighborhood by then, but as the market is up here. Um we're also kind of stuck where we're at. Um trying to, you know, we can't afford a four-million-dollar home. Um it's just not feasible. The other question is. Is there an opportunity or even down the road in another development that's? Going to be built X amount of years from now of having more single-family homes versus duplex, triplex. Um so we have a little bit of space for for families. Um I think there's a demand for it. Um it is nice to have duplexes and triplexes, I get that. Um but, you know. It'd be nice to have a single-family home with a lot and for kids to play around in and stuff. Think that's about all I got. Thanks.
I'll let Melanie answer your question.
Brian, thank you for your comments. Um a couple of things just regarding the square footages. These are um. Pretty significantly larger than the Wellington-Lincoln Park neighborhood, so the four-bedroom. Um single-family homes, which Sarah had mentioned, there's five of, that hovers uh just under twenty-five hundred square feet total. With the two-car garage and then two parking spots in front of the garage bay. Um then one down from that would be your three-bedroom duplex, which hovers at about eighteen twenty-seven. Um with regards to your questions on other neighborhoods that are looking towards single-family homes. Um that is something that we're definitely looking into on our next um for-sale housing project down the road, so. We are in tune with that, and we do appreciate your comments.
In terms of, is there like a metric in terms of parking spots available per uh per? Unit or like how the overflow is going to be handled?
So this um. This development actually has um one parking spot per bedroom in the entire.
Okay.
In the entire complex, or sorry, subdivision.
Parking exceeds the code by quite a bit, so um e- each. Single-family home is required to have three for the four bedrooms, and they'll all have four spaces. Um and then three bedrooms will have at least two, some will have three spaces. Yeah.
Great. Okay, um any other public questions, comments? I know it's nothing online, correct? Okay, all right, so close the um public comments. Uh commissioner comments. Uh I think we'll start in this direction. Steve?
Thank you. Um thanks, Eric. Great job on both the last time through and this time through. This is. This is detailed work that people need to get the details right, and you have. And thanks to the design team for a great project. Uh I think this has been well thought out. It's going to be a really valuable addition to the housing stock that the town can provide. And I just look forward to seeing you guys get the shovels in the ground and start building these things. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Um it's a well-conceived, well-thought-out, well-detailed project. Um uh Sarah, you you did a nice job. I applaud the A and E's, Alan Guerra and Norris Design. Uh because we don't take complete minutes anymore, I I do have to mention in my closing comments, uh please give us a concept storage. So that uh storage shed, so that that's thought through and uh. Otherwise, I I totally support the project. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Susan.
Thanks. Uh thanks to our designers and to Sarah. Uh I think that uh this is going to really be a positive addition to our community, and I support it.
And I'd also like to um also say second or third or fourth. Uh to Sarah, uh to staff and to the housing department and to the design and architecture team, so. Looking forward to this going up, and I commend the town. I think it's great. Um how the town is trying to put uh um meet its goals, but also in terms of the uh. The comprehensive county plan of consolidating a lot of the uh uh housing in the same areas. And uh it it's good, it's a good extension. And uh I'd like to thank my uh fellow commissioner for looking out for those of us that store RVs and hunting area B. Legally. So um I think that's it. So we will need to vote on recommending this to the town council. So I would entertain a motion for that, please.
Mister Chairman, I move that the planning commission recommend that the town council. Approve the Stillson Master Plan Town Project. Number PL twenty-twenty-three day zero-zero thirty-four at seven-ten Wellington Road. With a passing point analysis of a positive six points under the development codes relative policies. Meeting all absolute policies and upon the attached findings and conditions of approval.
Second, oh, sorry. Susan, did you get that one?
I think Mike was a little.
Um Steve, did you want to include the two um? Noted uh changes to the planning area B, those being the one on the uh natural appearing materials and the other on the private storage?
I don't think those de- deserve to be called out. I think they're just going to make them.
I think if you.
Want me to call them out?
I think we have to officially in order for you to recommend it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me go back to this and. Mister Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion. That this recommendation is based upon amending. Yeah, it's blurred right now. It hasn't gotten.
I got it right here. No.
Mine's here now.
Okay.
Amending paragraph one in the planning area table. For section B to include private storage as a permitted use. And amending paragraph four A. The. Third sentence to state. Would or natural appearing wood elements.
Great, thanks. And Ms. Proper, you're fine with that amendment?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Love the vote. Um Mister Gerard.
Yes.
Mister Fracture.
Yes.
Giller.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
All right, next up is uh no work sessions. There's a town council update. Thank you, everybody.
Take a pause while Ethan gets back here.
Yeah. Brian, thank you for your comments on looking out for the benefits of future neighbors.
And kids who learn to drive.
Hmm.
Hopefully away from that drainage ditch.
Yeah. Now I don't feel so bad. I'll tell my wife not to feel bad considering everyone's gone in there. We now carry tow chains.
We have the same in Silver Shekel. I've had so many people pull over in front of my, you know, right on top of the drainage ditch.
Yeah, you don't see it until you're in it. And then you're high-sided underneath and your wheels are spinning. Go to work.
You're chomping. What do you have to say? You're probably chomping at the bit, that's.
I just sort of listened. But I agree with the, with the ditch. I'm very careful there. I will never go in that ditch.
Yeah.
But I'm teaching my kids. I know that ditch quite well. I pass it every single day, numerous times.
Giant ma.
Giant maw.
The gaping maw.
Alright, I can give you a report on council meeting for March twenty eighth. And first thing, Planning Commission decisions. They were, they were approved. What was on the last agenda? I'm trying to remember now.
One. One or two New England Drive.
Yeah.
At the question of short term rental license, there is a short term rental license. There's no major concern both in SDR regulation and in development code of like limiting develop, sorry, I guess I should, limiting the development. There's nothing in either one of the codes, but the house is in zone three. So if they lost that license, they would never be able to get one again. Hypothetically.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for that, Cliff. Let's see, plastic reduction ordinance. So they did take action to ban plastic water bottles for sale. There's a lot of other plastic materials that they've decided to beverage containers, excuse me.
Single use.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you. That they decided they're going to spend more time on like, you know, liters of Coke, whatever, just all kinds of stuff. And so council is like, we want to get rid of it all. And part of the pushback they're getting, of course, from, as you can imagine, from City Market and that is like, there's no good alternative. And to which the response is, there used to be. But everyone's gone to plastic. So it's true. There's some of this stuff is not available in other commodities, but you know, certainly, certainly soda is, it's available in cans. So anyway, they've created a couple stakeholders group and they're going through meetings. So it's going to take longer for them and work through the rest of the plastic beverage containers, but council's wanting to, you know, be forward on that. So anyway, and then we had our first first reading on the Stables Development Contract with Suzanne. So the whole contract for, you know, outlines everything in terms of our partnership with her as a developer on the project. And, you know, what the town will put in terms of, you know, dollars, et cetera. So that's all being finely ironed out. Suzanne's been kind of working on faith with us up until now. And, you know, we've been paying bills as we need to, but, you know, this is a kind of important step to get get finalized. So that'll go to second reading next week. And then the Open Space Master Plan was actually approved on first reading, which is good to hear. That was adopted in number month or finalized a number of months ago, but the council has taken some time to actually adopt the plan. Probably the biggest thing, planning wise, we took the ramp, the outdoor energy use to the council. We asked some questions about thresholds in terms of what we heard from the council before is we think the program's great. But we're wondering if we have to just put some limits. And we don't want to necessarily just abandon thirty-three R and say, no, no more negative points if you offset. So in other words, you know, someone's going to come in, they're going to offset their energy use either by doing it onsite with solar or some type of renewable or or paying into an in loop fee, which either of those is acceptable, but the council is still concerned that we still want to dissuade outdoor use and the negative points we've used have helped dissuade some of that and we, you know, provide some documentation. It looks like we're probably going to where we're going to set some thresholds where, for example, with a single family, you're allowed up to fifteen hundred square feet of heated space outside. You have to offset that. You have to offset all of it. If you went behind beyond fifteen hundred, you'd start accruing negative points in five hundred square foot increments. So that's kind of the proposal. We'll be bringing back to council and we'll see how they do that. We're going to have a work session on that. It won't be till May. So, but anyway, that's, that's the direction that's all going and yeah, and it's kind of the same type of approach with outdoor gas appliances too. They're really not wanting to see a lot of that out there anymore. So at least from the outdoor perspective, I think they're addressing it appropriately. So yeah, so anyway, that's more to come on that, but I would guess that hopefully by June we'll have a might have a adopted new new code provision on that. You know, one of the things we were talking about is, okay, if you're, if someone's offsetting, can you still assign negative points? And I checked with Kirsten Crawford, our attorney, and she feels we can. And I feel it's warranted because there's still embodied carbon footprint when you're having to manufacture solar panels, transport them and that. So the alternative of not doing it all is still better. So I think we've got some justification for continuing to assign negative points. So we'll see how all of that shakes out with council. We, there was a rollout. They're starting to talk more specifically about the social equity blueprint and equity lens. And I, I can't explain much of it to you right now, but we've had this advisory committee in place for a couple of years now that's been working on that. And that's going to be something that is being shared with staff and they're continuing to kind of develop more fully. And we're just starting now to have a actually a internal staff committee on social equity. So we're just going to be forming that here in the near future. So there's more to come on that, but one of the, I think one of the premises behind this is social equity is going to be equity and inclusion is going to be embedded into every decision making process that the council makes. You know, if there's a code amendment, how is this impacting or not impacting, you know, you know, diversity of people who live in our community? So more to come on that. And then there was some trailhead projects, which joint trailhead projects with the county. I'm trying to remember where they were proposed now. Anyway, I can't pull them up. I tried to pull them up on the screen. And so I can't share those with you right now and I just can't really recollect where they were. But there's like three of them and
Were these just parking?
Yeah.
Creating a better parking space?
Yeah, parking. And there may have been some, no, I think it was mainly just improving parking. Yeah, one of them was up at the, now, now I do remember, one of them was up at the Loryum, which if you know where that is, Breck Park. I think it's called Breck Park Estates. It's big county subdivision way up the hill, up by the trailhead for Boris Pass Road. If that subdivision there that climbs a steep hill, it's like doesn't meet any engineering grade. And at the very top, they were talking about improving parking into the actual Loryum property where there's trails that go right now. It's a popular winter route for accessing Baldy as an alternative to from Baldy Road. And so anyway, that's the council did not like that idea and they thought there's better ways to address it, which is really addressing the existing plowing and the situation that they have on the road because there's room for a number of cars out on that road. But there's some issues they've had in the past with plowing and grades and stuff like that. So there's probably some grading and drainage work they can do to improve that. So anyway, I know that the council was not supportive of that one and I just apologized because I couldn't find my notes. So and the other couple.
Question on that, that was, that trailhead was developed just a few years ago.
Yes.
It's always been there.
Right.
But it was actually developed and and put on the map.
Yep.
As such, just a few years ago. That was through open space, correct?
Correct.
But now the town, the council is, and there's a proposal to expand the parking there.
Yeah.
As I understand it.
Yeah, into the property itself.
Into the property, okay. I know the spot quite well.
And the council is kind of just like, let's not disturb that area. There's it's just, it was not preferable to go into that area. It's kind of meadow and it leads into wetlands and I don't, they weren't going to impact the wetlands, but still, they think there are solutions we could do within the existing right away and in that area out there as opposed to doing that.
Right away, I was like, they developed this, but there's no place to park and they're encouraging people to use it, but there's no place, there's not much parking.
Well, it's jointly owned with the, with the county. Yeah, it was a huge like hundred acre parcel. We probably bought about ten years ago. It's, it's awesome and it's, believe me, it's the best access to Baldy.
It is a better access.
Yeah.
Than the Baldy Trailhead.
Yep, yep, yeah. Yeah, so anyway. Yeah, so that, so the other thing Eric brought up that night, maybe some of you have heard about this, but there's a big land use bill, housing land use bill being proposed at state legislature right now. And Eric's kind of been taking a lead with the Cass communities, the Colorado area ski towns and addressing some of the problems with that bill. It's frankly, there's, it's a real goal of Governor Polis to get this through. He made it kind of a keynote of his State of the State speech and Lori Best was actually in attendance and he pointed out to Lori because he's met with her on housing issues and to see what the town has done and he's really impressed with what we've done. And he's trying to make headway on housing and by providing more opportunities. But unfortunately, the bill has fraught with a lot of issues that we're concerned about, as you can imagine, and really what it does is, some of the things it does is it takes, for example, single family, any single family lot, you can put an accessory dwelling unit on it. Well, we allow that already. That's great enough. The only issue is, is there's no requirement that a deed restriction get associated with that accessory dwelling unit. And then the size limitations are much more generous than ours. So then, then you take a look at, they have this thing called middle housing. It allows, for example, on a single family lot, the premise behind this is most jurisdictions have seventy to eighty percent of their land devoted to single family residential subdivisions and it's obviously a pretty inefficient use of land. And so in, in some communities, especially on the West Coast, they have implemented where duplexes are allowed outright on, on those lots. And in this case, they're allowing middle housing, which would allow duplexes. You could even do triplex, fourplex, I think even up to a sixplex on an existing single family lot. And so not to argue the merits of that very much. Except that a couple of things, one, once again, there's no deed restriction associated with those. So if any developer came in here, they would it wouldn't be something that was built for our workforce because there's no deed restriction required and that's the only way that our workforce can afford units right now. We did some math and, you know, the average home is on a market home is three times as much as the average worker can afford to, to pay for. So basically our average workers in town have to live in workforce housing. So that's, that's an issue. And there's a number of other items in the bill that you know, caused hesitation for us. We're concerned that you know, this will just send us backwards. We also have, you know, the carrying capacity of this basin. You know, the whole Joint Upper Blue Master Plan was dealt, developed with the thought of if we maintain our existing zoning, we can probably accommodate it with our infrastructure, sewer water roads. And yes, it's going to get busier and some people already say it's too busy, but you know, there'll be some limitation to how much we can have happen here. In this case, it's gonna, it could jack up the amount of density we have here significantly. And there's enough provisions in, in this bill that basically don't allow us to regulate and limit those things. So there's a number of troubling things that are in the bill and so Eric and and Kirsten, our attorney, have been working with powers that be to kind of relay those messages, but I think honestly, right now, they're looking for a delay. It's supposed to go to, it's going to go, I guess, to a committee this week. And either Senator, House Committee and there's just going to be a bunch of public testimony on it, but I think at this point, they're kind of thinking that amendments to it are kind of unlikely or it's going to be really hard to shape those. And it's probably going to just be that there's, you're going to have to be, you know, requesting just saying, please do not pass this or requesting as a rural resort community, which we're called, to be somehow exempted by demonstrating that we're providing so much housing and that every year we're adding to that stock by a certain percentage. And so those are a couple of the strategies we're considering right now, but anyway, it's taken up a ton of a lot of staff's time and a lot of council members, especially Eric's time. He's been super honest and so yeah, but needless to say, Polis, Polis has got some allies and he really wants this to kind of be a hallmark piece. You know, I'm not sure that he wouldn't consider amendments, but the problem is, is you know how legislation gets developed. Sometimes there's not the it doesn't always work out as cleanly as we'd like. It's the old sausage making kind of analogy. So anyway, so yeah, so there'll be more to come on that, but it is of concern to us and there's also a lot of Colorado Municipal League has come out against it. You know, they represent all the cities and towns. And a lot of cities and towns, you know, they, they, they're against it for different reasons. One of them is preemption of local home rule. Right. You know, and you know, us being able to develop our own regulations and, you know, deal with our community our own way. And that's honestly, in some conservative communities, that's the biggest issue is home rule.
It's being litigated already. And one of the other issues are like planned developments like the Highlands where the, the recorded declarations don't permit duplexes or anything. And the theory would be, I bought my lot there knowing there's not going to be a duplex built next to me. And if you build one there, then you have taken my rights from me. So there, it's got a lot of problems.
Yeah, it does. But anyway, it's yeah, it's, it's created quite a buzz. So anyway, that's kind of, that's the council update.
I just wanted to add on the Upper Blue, we had an interesting project work session on Country Boy Mine. Which the county or specifically Julia, I mean, the town commented on. But they're looking to expand their scope of operations and claim that under the rural zoning that they have, there's, it's, it's interesting, the the dozens of uses that are allowed, technically they could offer all these uses. But, but they want to expand their facilities, put in a commercial kitchen so they can serve food up there, allow food trucks and have four lodging units, like cabin or yurts, like what are up at Tennessee Pass and such. Yeah, overnight, yeah, short term rental units and also expand their, their housing for their own employees and then donate a chunk of land or a land bank for the town or for the county to use for future for future workforce housing, that they would donate the land into a land bank for that. The, the issues that came up were, obviously, I think the biggest issue is traffic coming up there. They actually presented an analysis which I challenged that said that the Wellington neighborhood has two hundred and fifty-four homes and they average nine and a half trips a day per home up at Wellington Road. And, and so if you multiply that out and then they only can accommodate like a hundred and fifty people a day. So you know, it's insignificant the traffic they're generating. And I said, I don't think the average home in Wellington makes nine and a half trips a day up and down. Ride their bikes and there's a bus stop, so.
You know, if you, if you, if you look at IT, the Transportation Engineers manuals, it'll say ten trips. If you look at, uh, IT, the transportation engineers manuals, it'll say ten trips a day for a single family.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, you're right. I mean, that doesn't mean that's the reality of Wellington, but that that's probably where they pulled that from.
Yeah, yeah, they are doing a traffic study, uh, uh, to see what the traffic currently is and what it would generate and, uh. But also, a a lot of what they point, a lot of things they need is dependent upon the town of Breck. In terms of water, particularly water and sewer and possibly transportation. Um, and, um, perhaps paying to have a free ride extended further up or. Having that section, uh, further of French Culture Road further up to their entrance. Uh, which they said they wouldn't do, uh, but, um, what's, um, but so any case. Um, I threw out there as a suggestion at the end is you might just want to consider, you know, annexing, talking to the town of Rec about annexing. Cause it's gonna be dependent so much on the town of Rec services for this. So I don't know if that was out of line or not, but I just, you know. I just, it 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 was, uh, and Lee Girvin wrote a very thoughtful letter as a comment, uh, to it. So. Anyway, just something that I don't know if how much of it is on the radar of, you know, uh, Breck as a whole or all the all the neighbors. Neighborhoods along, uh, Riling, Wellington and Huron Road and French Culture Road that would be affected by that expansion of what they're doing.
So it sounds like they would have a lot more commercial events. I mean.
Yeah, well, they already have got approval. They already are building a pavilion for, uh, but they got turned down for a liquor license. Uh, county, so. Uh, but there, I think they're reapplying. I don't know what, by how they were turned down or about what I. The, you know, the county doesn't publish minutes of their, uh, I can never find the minutes for the county meetings. The VOC meetings.
But Lee is on the liquor board, so you could ask her.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But the use in that whole valleys. Goes up every year.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Between skiing in the winter, there's more and more and more people. And biking.
Yeah.
And hiking, so. So, you know, and and we're we're cutting off our own.
Yeah.
Speed. So it's speed because we're expanding, you know, um, our trail systems up there and advertising.
Well, this neighborhood too, yeah.
And this neighborhood.
It was a work session, right?
It was work session, yeah. They were looking to see how we felt about it. And I think, uh, uh, the the conclusion. Was that we think this would now qualify as a commercial property. And so that kind of affects the, in order to prove it, it kind of affects the ma- the upper blue master plan, uh, the joint master plan. So how could they, what could they do? So. Your buddy Danny, I'm sure is crafting some strategies for that, so. It was a Danny presentation. So. So the, uh, um. I was gonna say, there was, uh, there was, so an another interesting, uh, comment, which actually Mark is not here. But, uh. Uh, in terms of why some, uh, members of council might have been opposed to this neighborhood, the stables lot. Is that the traffic coming up from, so it's very interesting, the. If the people down in, uh, French Creek. Claim that everyone north, uh, uh, are up the road from them, including Vista and Wellington and Lincoln Park. Drive faster than their their neighborhood than slow down in their own. And the people in Vista feel that way about the people in Wellington. The people in Wellington feel that people going up, uh, Sa- to Sally Barber and everything and and. B and B Trailhead and Country Boy are driving past through our neighborhood. So it's, uh, so one of the main reasons, uh, uh, that the folks particularly in Vista. Were concerned about another sixty four units or hundred and fifty people driving up and down is just. You know, the with the more traffic and people speeding more up and down Wellington and Riling Road.
Well, that the zoning on that property is A one, which is agricultural.
Yeah, oh, that's it.
And so.
The uses, but you should look up the uses.
Well, there's, I know, there's a ton of uses there that are allowed, but they're all kind of. You know, ranching agricultural type of things and they'll have some things.
Have a school there? You can have a clinic, a medical clinic?
Yeah, a little bit of that, yeah.
Fur furrier. For the beavers, if you can.
When I, when I, my first house in Breckenridge was in. What we used to call BD Village.
Yeah.
Prince Creek.
Yeah.
And that was it. That was all there was.
Yeah.
And then it turned to dirt and hardly anybody drove up, well, uh, Prince Creek. Wellington Road didn't go up there.
Yeah.
So. It's pretty amazing to see difference now in the traffic.
Get worse.
Too many monkeys in the jungle.
It's something, so anything else, any other comments? So it's seven twenty six, uh, and adjourned the April fourth. Uh, Town of Breckage Planning Commission Meeting.